Did I take your seat? I didn't think you'd take your seat.
Oh, sure.
You have a very good reason.
There you are, huh? I am doing good. You? I haven't been practicing.
Say one for Dennis. We're gonna do Dennis, too.
Okay.
Oh, you can see me again. I was playing the violin about my knee hurting. I needed to end.
I appreciate the honor.
Tell them nobody's to horse.
I don't know. It's an old joke, I think, isn't it?
We'll call the meeting to order. Roll call. Four members are here. Ron Baer will be here, but he'll be late. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda? Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Only one item on the agenda is Proposition 123 budget discussion. And I'll leave it to you. Anyway, I'm just gonna preface this, but by saying, I'm glad you guys are here. I think this conversation between the two of us would really expedite things and get this going. And I thank you for working this late for us, so, anyway.
You ready for me?
All right.
Hoping something's gonna come up on the display here.
They've already told they got that, what did they pay for your college online college issue?
There is.
She's got a year and a half away from her degree.
You could.
No.
Your screens are black, right?
Yeah, their screens are black.
Oh, it's flowers.
Actually, it's kind of a dark gray.
Mike, how's that? Does that work for you?
Mine's got dust.
Okay, we'll pretend there's a picture there. I think we can do this maybe without this. I might have a bad cord. I'm not sure. It's not recognizing my... Yeah. There you go. So, President Gregoire, members of the board, Dr. Videnheimer, we wanted to share briefly some information about Prop 123. And I wanted to acknowledge, before we get started, the Negotiation Solution Team. They are here tonight. We just came from our monthly meeting, our regularly scheduled monthly meeting, where we've been working on developing two recommendations contingent on the passage of Proposition 123. And that would be, the two different recommendations are, one for fiscal year '16. If Prop 123 passes, we will receive an increase in this year, fiscal year '16. And we will receive increases in future years through 10 years. So that's the duration for the additional funding that Prop 123 would, that we would enjoy if it passes. The two plans are a little bit unique. The first plan being that the money would be spent for, or the decision of whether or not the money would become available to us would be after the election, which would be after the May 17th, Prop 123 election. It's gonna be a little bit late for us to deploy those dollars in this fiscal year. So that we've been talking about how we would best utilize those funds, knowing that we're gonna have a short window this year, or to leverage those dollars to the benefit of the district in, early in next year. But that does complicate things because the Proposition 123 is projected to generate about $6.1 million for our district. And it's gonna appear like $12.2 million, because that's how much we would have carrying forward the $6.1 from this current year into next year. One of the provisions within Prop 123 is unlimited amount of carryforward, which would make sure that we don't have to worry about the 4% limit that exists today. So, two recommendations that are being developed. One for fiscal year '16 increase, about $6.1 million. And there's been some discussion about that being one-time expenses. And then a second recommendation, that would be ongoing commitments to expenditures in fiscal year '17 and years beyond that. And as a result of that, we have been looking at what we call the list of budget fixes, or, if you will, options for the group to consider. And we just finished, and these are in no particular order, talking about some of the items. So just wanted to share with the governing board those things that the NST folks are deeming as important to fund for next year. And these are in no particular order, so these have not been prioritized. So one item is assistant principals. So, changing the staffing model for assistant principals at our K-6 and K-8 schools. Addressing inequities that exist between principal salaries. So this is the difference that might exist between when and at what point in time principals were hired.
Wait, can I stop you there? Do these have dollar values attached to them?
Some of them do. So, let me share, the assistant principal amount was projected to be about $715,000. Yeah, so the details are, and I might need to seek some help here. So it's a minimum of a halftime TOA at our K-6 schools, up to a 1.0. Based on a rubric, of course, as I was mentioning. I'm gonna defer to our DVBLT members of NST to share that amount, if you would.
No, no, I'm not confused. That's in addition to, though, if we be a teacher on assignment, would they also be teaching? That would be it? Okay, all right, go ahead.
Sorry, can I ask a quick question before we go to yours? 11 additional assistant principals or five and a half? That makes...
Right, the half, okay.
Okay, Maria, go ahead.
If we... Is there anything in policy or something we have written that we're requiring you to do, too, currently? It's in policy, or is it negotiated, or is it in, it's in policy? Okay, but is it in the manual, or is it in a written policy? Certified manual? Okay. Okay.
Okay, any more on that? Tricia, the inequity in salaries. What is that total? Okay. Okay, well, again, I, because that's, again, that we've, we're, I think we're addressing the certified. But I was aware of the inequities in the building leaders as well. And I hadn't had to talk with Lauren yet about that, so... Jim, do you have a number for that?
The, yeah, I'm just seeing if I can reboot this computer to see if I can get it to work here. I'm not giving up on it. Maybe I am. Okay, so, that was, the first two options there were the staffing model for our assistant principals at our elementary schools, and then the inequities that exist with our principal salaries. One of the other items that the group talked about was on the, the classified group talked about a salary increase. And the discussions today were related around the potential for a 2% salary increase for the classified staff. And I do have a value on that. So we'll come, we'll come back to that as soon as I get logged back in here. The other thing the classified group mentioned is we do have custodians that are both nine-month and 12-month in the district. And they think that standard should be that they all are 12-month positions. This will help in a number of ways. It will obviously provide some additional manpower at the schools to be able to make sure our schools are ready over the summer. But it also would, would create some consistencies. We have some people that are halftime, nine-month custodians and halftime, 12-month custodians. So they work full-time, but not throughout the entire school year. So, in a full-time capacity. So it would create some standards that would make life a little bit easier for us to manage from a human capital standpoint. The, the other thing that was talked about happened to do with hard-to-fill addenda and providing a hard-to-fill addenda. I'm sorry, let me go back to the classified salary increase. The 2% salary increase is roughly about $567,000 in just salary alone. And the nine-month, 12-month, we don't have. We had it costed out last year. We need to update those numbers to be able to provide an accurate number for that. Hard-to-fill addenda, so we've looked at our hard-to-fill addenda. We currently give hard-to-fill addenda for those that have experience beyond five years. So if you're hired into a position, let's say a special education position, and you have 10 years of experience, the first five years are credited to you based on our hiring schedule. The years six through 10 are provided to the employee in a hard-to-fill addenda, and they're valued. So the only hard-to-fill addenda that are provided are for those people in certain positions that have more than five years of experience. One of the proposals that we were discussing this evening was to provide a hard-to-fill addenda for all the positions that we've identified as hard-to-fill, for everybody that's in the position. So instead of valuing it based on their years of experience, valuing it based on the position itself. So just to give you an idea of the magnitude, we currently have 102 special ed positions that receive a hard-to-fill addenda, and 192 positions that do not receive a hard-to-fill addenda that are in our special education teaching ranks. What the committee proposed is that if we gave a hard-to-fill addenda to those 192 special ed, or leave the 102 that have the existing hard-to-fill as they are, and create a new addenda for the 192 that don't currently get a hard-to-fill addenda. So we'd be providing addenda for the position, not for the years of experience, and valuing it at $3,000. We could do that for both the special ed and our high school science and math. Those are the major categories that receive a hard-to-fill addenda. That would be roughly $1.5 million in salary and benefit costs. Correct. Or didn't get it because they didn't have more than five years of experience when we hired them. Yes, so both of those.
And Jimmy said that was for high school math and science only?
Correct.
Well, you have $1.5 million, but I'll just disagree with you right now, because I don't think that's the number. I think it's a lot less. And when we get into the other areas, I'll tell you why.
Okay. The last couple of things that we talked about, and I don't have values for these, but, so, we talked about addressing the teacher salary inconsistencies. And so we've had lots of discussions about this. I'm gonna, I'm gonna get through the list, and then we'll come back to this, because I think there's much more information that we want to share in regards to this. But this is the infamous scatter plot graph that we've shared on a number of occasions that showed that we had variations of salary amounts for similar years of service. And how do we maybe address that? And not only address what has happened over time, but also look at what caused that to happen, to see if we could fix that so that it doesn't create, that situation's not created moving forward in a future year. Teacher salary increase, which could be lumped into the inequities or the inconsistencies within the salaries of the teachers. Those could complement them each other. Increase the professional growth credit hour value. Currently, we value each credit hour at $50. This proposal would be to increase that value. We're seeing fewer and fewer people apply for professional growth credit. And one of the things that we hear consistently is that at $50 per credit, it does not pay for the expense because of the increased tuition costs to earn those professional growth credits. And then, finally, increase the contingency staffing. We have a very minimalistic number of contingency staff built into the budget. The request is to increase that number to be able to have more teachers, to be able to deal with the changing population. And thankfully for us, it has been an increasing population. So this would give us more, more of a bullpen of teachers, if you will, or at least the funding value of it, it's not actually bodies, that we could hire to be able to address some of the unknowns of student enrollments throughout the district. So that's the list that we talked about this evening. I want to come back to the teacher inconsistencies. We've looked at a couple of different models, and I wanted to just acknowledge several people, not the least of which is President Gregoire. He's developed a model that would help us provide different solutions related to addressing the teacher inequities. Dr. Scott Smith, in our, in our district office here, has provided a lot of his time towards this effort to be able to come up with some simulations based on information that we know, to see how we might be able to fix the scatter plot or address the issues that we've been, that have been identified by us graphing where the current salaries are based on their years of service. And so we have a couple of different ways that that can be addressed. And it's a, part of this has to do with a need for how much of the $6.1 million do we want to target for, to address the salary inequities that we have amongst our teachers? And I'm just gonna give you kind of a, for example, we have, in some cases, and this is, this is not an actual example, but in some cases, we have a 20-year teacher that's making less than a teacher that we've hired with 10 years of service. And so those are things that we would like to address or fix. Not only address them in terms of correcting those two hypothetical employees that I just mentioned, but also address how that was able to be realized, knowing that we do need some tools to be able to recruit people to fill vacancies in the district. So that could be changing the way we value things, and certainly looking at hard-to-fill addenda. And as we mentioned before, not just maybe valuing it based on years of service, but maybe by position, which would be something new for us. We do have, in the, I just want to jump back to where we sit with the budget in terms of our projections for fiscal year '17. Back on a March 8th edition of the fiscal year '17 budget, we showed a deficit of about $1.6 million that we thought we would be able to make up over time with the, with the projected carryforward from the current year fiscal year '16, with student growth money that we're expecting for the increased student population that we have in this year, and the projected carryforward. And we'll talk about that in a little more detail later in the regular board meeting. With those two things, we think we can make up the $1.6 million. And so that gives us a full $6.1 million to be able to apply towards needs for the, for the district. On the list of budget fixes were seven items that were staffing needs, and those were based on student populations. They included everything from reading specialists to additional special ed teachers. And we've provided that information as well. That, those seven items represent just over $2 million worth of expense projected for next year. Again, those are driven based on new information we have related to the student populations that those positions would service. So with that, I think I'll turn it over to, back to the board president, so that we can continue the study session.
Actually, what I think, first thing we want to discuss, or at least kind of be in agreement on, is the $6.1 that's for this fiscal year. I think a lot of people are waiting on their contracts. I know other districts have already said what they're doing with it. And I think, I think we're on the same page as far as that goes from my understanding. But has the NST committee come up with a proposal for that?
President Gregoire, thank you for reminding me. When I jumped back to the fiscal year '17 budget, I intended to reference that as well. One of the things, and this was just a suggestion that was offered as, as an option in the NST group discussed to some extent today, but I would not say any decisions were reached. We talked about, of the $6.1 million that we would generate for this year, taking about $3.1 million of that and using it for one-time capital needs for the district. Specifically, when we increased the salary increase as a result of the MNO override, we increased it from $4.2 to $5.2 million. We have a projected minimalistic capital budget for next year at $4 million. Right now, our plan includes only $3 million to fund $4 million worth of needs. One of the things that we've heard from the schools is they really need, there's been several years that we have not provided a capital allocation to the schools. And so there's been a strong push to be able to provide a capital allocation to the schools. By carrying forward a million dollars' worth of capital from fiscal year '16 into '17 would give us the ability to be able to create a capital allocation for the schools. In addition, there are two other capital needs that we think need to be addressed. One is, we need to accelerate our bus replacement. We've been working diligently to reduce expenditures within our transportation costs for the district. We do have bond dollars that would help us replace the fleet. But we went so many years without buying any school buses. We'd like to at least entertain the option to consider buying an additional six or seven buses, about $1 million, to accelerate the bus replacement to help with ongoing maintenance costs that we're incurring in the Transportation Department. And the third and last item, a one-time capital expense, would be some textbook needs that we have as a district. We have math grades nine through 11, and science grades seven through 12 that are scheduled to be adopted. And in the $4 million capital budget for next year, we only have $1.2 million in textbooks. And it's projected that it would be in excess of $2 million for those two adoptions. So those are the one-time expenses. So it's about half of the $6.1 million, in rough numbers. The other half, the NST has talked about a longevity payment to be paid at the beginning of next school year. So August, at one point in time, I had said September, but the group today talked about it being pushed up as early as we can, potentially in August. One-time longevity payment based on years of service. So would not attach to salary, but would reward employees that have endured the many years where we were not able to provide a meaningful salary increase for our employees at the beginning of the start of next school year. So there will be a salary increase for our employees, as the board approved with the MNO override that was approved by our voters in November. But that's gonna be parsed out in their bi-weekly paycheck. So it'll be smaller amounts. This would be able to provide, and to put it in perspective, $3 million would be approaching 2.5% if it was evenly distributed. In the past, when we had the Student Success Funding Formula, our funding that the state provided for one year, we had some language that allowed us to provide a differentiated pay based on the years of experience or the longevity with the district. And so that's one of the things the NST group had talked about, is maybe providing some differentiated pay based on years of experience, or longevity or tenure with the district, so that we would recognize those people that have endured those years where we weren't able to do anything meaningful from a salary perspective. And do that as a one-time payment at the end of August timeframe. I'm just using that as a, for example. And that would allow us to recognize all of those employees that continue to be loyal to our district and return for next year. So they would have to return in order to earn it. Or anybody that would officially retire with the state retirement system, so that we wouldn't penalize somebody who just happened to reach their retirement when we were able to receive the additional funding to recognize them. So those are the things that have been discussed with the Negotiation Solution Team at this point. So those are the things that have been discussed with the negotiation solution team at this point.
Have any numbers been generated in that respect as far as longevity? Again, my concern is we're running against the, the teacher contract clock here. They have to have their, their contract signed by the end of the week, and I would like to have some good news for them specifically. So I know we can't vote on it until our next board meeting, but at least they'll have an idea of what's coming, coming up to bat.
Well, we can't put this in the contract anyways if the vote hasn't occurred because...
Well, it's not going to be, but at least they'll have some understanding what's going to be approved or not approved for the forwarding board meeting. Again, my concern, and I asked this question that how are contracts coming in? And I was told, yeah, they're coming in as usual, but the usual the last two or three years has been really bad. So that kind of scared me. So I want to make sure that we're not having to staff three hundred-plus positions again this year. So any good news we can, we can at least deliver before the deadline, the better. And it doesn't have to be official news. It can be just news that this is what's going to be on the agenda for the next board meeting. But at least they'll give, give them an idea of what they can expect. And of course, we can never guarantee it until the final vote, of course. But, so with that, have you guys had any discussions about numbers or comparing with Paradise Valley or Peoria or anybody else in that respect? Because I know, I've seen Peoria's numbers, and I think I've seen one other school districts, but I'm just curious again. The reason we do that is to compare to make sure we're competitive. And that's, compare to be competitive, and that's what we do.
President Gregoire, we have been monitoring what our colleagues are doing, our comparable districts and even our neighboring districts that might not be comparable districts that we do in a formal comparative analysis that we do in many respects. The, the student success funding language that we used previously was tiered based on what the total dollar amount was. So it determined a, a flat dollar amount and provided a percentage of that based on the years of service. A diminishing amount for the fewer years of service that, that an employee might have. But that amount hasn't been generated. So three million dollars and, you know, roughly twenty-seven hundred employees. Looking to see if I have a number here. Yeah, thirty-two hundred. So it's, it's roughly about... Doing some quick math here, nine hundred and thirty-five dollars if it was equally distributed amongst the thirty-two hundred and some odd F T E that we have. And that would be in terms of a percentage... Wow, that can't be right. What's the problem with doing math on the fly here? Sorry. Two point seven percent.
Two point seven, okay. Yeah, she was just showing me Phoenix Union has a three percent.
But that's only, but that's, it's not across the board. That's not across the board, and that's only, that's a one-time.
Right, and you got to remember, just even on the certified group, the fourteen hundred dollar flat increase that we've provided in the M and O was arranged between two percent and four point one percent. So that, that has already been included, and that's included in the contract that was issued to them. And this would be in addition. And of course, even if we were to approve this on April twenty-sixth, I just want to make sure that there's an understanding. It's still going to be contingent on the outcome of the election.
Of course. But again, it's something that we need to get that information at least, you know. And again, we're talking here, but you guys are welcome to speak, speak up on this issue because it's important, at least to me, and I know it's important to all of you, on where we, where we fall on this and what you think and...
Yeah, and just to update, fifteen hundred and thirty-five contracts have been accepted, and only six hundred and nineteen remain as of this moment. That have not been, that have not been considered.
Well, I, I think, I think what, what President, oh, I'm guessing what he's saying because I'm just, I'm interpreting is he just wants the, this is what it'll look like if it does, this it'll look like if it doesn't, which, which we did receive, but we literally just received it, and it was our negotiations team that did it and then sent it out to us. Is that something you guys are working on that, that we, that they'll have that? You know, if it does, yes, if it doesn't, this. Because I know if it doesn't, our, our package goes pew, and just like everyone else's.
Yeah, so President Gregoire, Ms. Fisher, the, our intentions in terms of process were to provide some information, get some additional input from the board through this study session, as well as it's on the agenda for the regular board meeting to preview, which would be just a, a repeat of what we're talking about right now. But to actually have a recommendation for both fiscal year sixteen and fiscal year seventeen, if, you know, of the Prop one twenty-three funding that would, again, be contingent on the outcome of the election, but have that considered by the board at the, on the April twenty-sixth board meeting. That's our current timeline that we're working with.
Okay, okay.
Michael, I have a question.
Go ahead.
So with the, the remaining three million dollars, we're looking at, or you guys are looking at, years of service to figure out some kind of a rubric for years of service? And you guys haven't talked about it at all, or nothing in specifics?
President Gregoire, Ms. Ward-Wade, nothing in specifics other than, you know, we know that we had implemented the student success funding formula in a similar manner. So we've talked about that, but not the specifics of that. But the three million dollars would equate to nine hundred and thirty-five dollars if it was equally distributed about two point seven.
Yeah, because I see longevity on this list that we got in a couple of places, so it must be important.
All right, so Maria has a question.
Oh, go ahead, Maria. Okay, anyone else want to throw their two cents in comments? Again, are we on the right track? Is that something the committee wants? Go ahead.
I have a question. Jim, is part of the two thousand seventeen plan, you talked about teacher salary increase. Does that relate to also the new, new hire? New hires, would it increase the, the base salary for hiring in a new, a brand-new teacher who's out of college?
Yeah, President Gregoire, Ms. O'Brien, the, there is an item on the, on the list to address or at least consider, the increase to the starting teacher salary amount. And when that was originally discussed with the N S T group regarding the M and O override increase, they were very specific about the increase that they wanted to see there, and it was an exactly seven hundred and fifty-eight dollar increase to the starting salary. So it would go from thirty-four thousand, eleven dollars to thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars for, for next year. So that has already been, at least partially addressed. There was some talk, and it was about trying to increase that amount, but the, the, the members of the Teachers Association that were on the D V, or on the N S T group from D V A were adamant about it remaining at that dollar amount.
And do we know what our comparable school districts offer for new hires?
And, and we do have that information for the current year, but as many districts are dealing with the same things that we're addressing, some of those things have not become known as of yet. And I should note, though, I did speak with my colleague in the Peoria School District yesterday, and the, the seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars was a specific dollar amount to match the Peoria School District's starting salary. And even with their increases, he tells me that they are not increasing their starting salary. So we would be the same starting salary as the Peoria School District for next year. So there are some amounts that are being gathered that would include the plans that people are considering, much like we are now.
How can they do that? Oh, sorry.
Anyone else? So I know this is kind of awkward the way we're seated here, seated here, but I, I really want to refocus back on to those. Is there anything we can kind of cohesive then work out the numbers that we can at least bring, a proposal to the next board meeting that we can also share with our employees about the, the one-time payment? And again, the, you said the two point seven percent on average. Is that something that, I mean, are we, are we still debating about the three point one that, you know, that we, we need in capital?
Well, just, just a clarification, you know, we're developing a recommendation from this group. It wouldn't be official until the board were, were to act on it. So we were really seeking some input from the board in terms of how we had framed that, at least initially, to make sure that we were on the right track. If that needs to be altered or something, that we would be happy to consider that. I think that it would be, I think it'll be relatively easy for me to predict that there are going to be more requests than the dollars that we have available. And I think part of our, part of the thing that, part of the things that we talk about in the negotiation solution team is having a global perspective of what can be, what can benefit the organization as a whole the best. So we know that we have to be competitive. We know that it is our staff. We are a service-based organization, so it is our staff that allows us to, to continue to do the great things that we do for students, so we want to make sure that we reward them. And we know there are some needs that exist throughout the organization that have not been addressed due to limited budgets in, in the most recent past. So, so really, part of the intent of, I think, this board study session is to make sure that we're on the right track with the fiscal year sixteen plan, which is the kind of, I'll just say, splitting the fiscal year sixteen Prop one twenty-three in half for one-time expenses and the rest going to longevity, or should it be some other ratio than at half? And then talking about any of the other items that we mentioned that are a priority of the N S T as to if those things, if other things should be considered or if any of those things are, are not of a great interest to the board as we get ready to develop these recommendations.
Well, actually, I, and I'm just going to weigh in on these, the three items you brought up for the capital needs. I definitely believe we need buses. I've been through the, the bus yard, and I've seen what we have and what we really were, six and seven is, is very, very, very conservative. So, but allocation for schools, I look at the, the school budgets. And not all schools, but there's a ton of them that have a big bag of cash sitting in their coffers. And not that they're just using their money wisely, but shouldn't that, some of that money be used for capital needs when they're, when, time they need stuff? Isn't that what some of that money's there for?
President Gregoire, in fact, that's our current plan now. So just so that people are aware, we have something called the essential capital request process. So when a school has a capital need and they have not received a capital allocation for a number of years now, they can make a request to this committee. There's four individuals on this committee that review these requests, and there is a criteria that is provided to them as to what would be funded. And one of the, one of the things that we look at is what the available cash balances are that they would have to afford this on their own. And we see a large number of these requests increasing because it has been so long that since we've been able to provide an allocation, the schools were frugal because we've known about the, you know, some of these reductions to the capital allocation, the state-imposed reductions, I should clarify. And so they have saved those dollars and used them sparingly, but they have not been replenished over a long period of time. And so they're at a point now where we, we think that if we don't provide the allocation, we're going to see a larger number of these essential capital requests, and it's going to become more and more difficult to make sure that those needs are being met. We would prefer to put those dollars in the hands of the schools and let them make those decisions because we feel they know the, the needs of their campuses better than the four members of the committee could ever learn.
Okay, well, the concern I have is giving them the money without having the need, and they'll find the need, in other words. And I wasn't aware of the, the process that you just explained, that there are, needs are ready for this money. Because I, no, just because we have it doesn't mean we have to spend it. And so, but that's my two cents on the capital needs. I'd like to see that number a little lower. Again, I think it's important that we prioritize our, our staff from head to toe, especially the ones that, you know, it's been a lot of tough years, and it'd just be nice to say thank you. And this, this six point one, that three point three million, that's, that's a thank you to me. That's, hey, this is for sticking us, sticking with us through all the troubled times. That's what this longevity thing's about, so.
On the textbook adoptions, the math and the science for the high schools. Do we know what that is, what the cost is, what that looks like yet? The only reason I'm asking is because I know a lot of times you get in the latest and greatest, oh, my God, it's just a wonderful book, we have to have it, and it sits on a shelf forever. Is this a latest and greatest that may or may not fly? Or is this a proven something we really need?
President Gregoire, Ms. Fisher, and this is information, I don't know if Dr. Galigan is here, that she could speak to, I'll give it a shot. It's about a million dollars for the ninth through eleventh grade math adoption, which was not done the last time math was adopted. And with the Common Core standards and, and some of those things, there are things that we are required to teach students that we don't have the tools to be able to teach them. That is similar also in, in the case of science. So really, we have about twice the need that we have built into the four million dollar budget, capital budget for next year, and I'll let Dr. Galigan add to that.
President Gregoire, Ms. Fisher, our nine, twelve math courses have not had an updated textbook that adequately even comes near to addressing the Arizona College and Core Ready standards. Those specific changes that were made in two thousand and ten. So we have piecemealed any number of resources, current texts that we've had for years, as well as, as using an online text that we semi-created ourselves.
But this is a need, not a want.
Yes, that would be true.
Yeah.
President Gregoire, I guess, as not so much part of the two thousand and sixteen, but two thousand and seventeen pot of money, maybe. I do think it's important that we make our starting salary more competitive. I think as a favor, or not a favor even, but if we don't want to have as many positions to fill, and you have, you do have teachers coming out of schools, not, maybe not very many of them, but we want them to choose us, and I think that dollar amount does make a difference. I realize we're not... I realize we're not going to compete with a Chandler or a Gilbert maybe, who is at, I think, 39,000. But I think we need to be able to compete with Glendale and Washington and, and Peoria. And not just compete, I think we need to be able to beat them, so.
I, I agree with, with Ms. O'Brien, at least enough to, to where we're attracting them. I mean, they're going to graduate out of school, their student loans are going to go into, into repayment six months later. They're not going to take their first job based on, ooh, I like this one. They're going to say, the bottom line is, if I take that job, I have this much to live on and I can make my student loan payment. And, and so at some point, we have to look at that base. And, and yes, we need to do the longevity as well, so, but, but I still go back to, we, at some point have to really start evening some of this out. I don't, I don't hear the addenda going away. I hear we're shuffling it a little more. And when I have loyal teacher A making a, a salary and I have new teacher B making a salary plus 10,000 addenda or whatever, and, you know, this teacher's like, you know, hey, you know, peace out, I'm going to this other district because, I mean, I just, there's, there, I, for me, the priorities are evening out to, to honor the people we have, getting that longevity. But, but moving forward, we also need to take the whole scale up. And I don't, I don't know that I have the answer, but.
Well, anyway, just, okay, before you, we're making comments here. Hopefully you guys will see where we're coming from. You're still the N S T committee, you're still bringing the recommendations. And I think one of the, the reason we're here is there was some, maybe not clarity of where the board is on certain items. And if you guys have a question on where we're at or what we think on something, when you go back and meet again, now's the time to ask those questions to the board because we want to make sure that if you guys go down a road, it's not going to get nailed down, or you know what I'm saying? So, go ahead, Maria. Again, I don't think that's going to happen, and I'm going to kind of chime in here because I kind of have a better insight on this than Locke, because I've been spending some hours working on this. And just from the calculations I've done, let's just throw out a 35,000. If we set the starting teacher salary at 35,000 and then have $700 divisions between each year. So second-year teacher would be 35.7, you know, going on and on. What this would cost to straighten the salaries out, it would cost the district 30, 3.6 million dollars to do this. But, the good news is it'll save about $745 in addenda. Because we have some teachers that are on addenda instead of, in lieu of salary, that, that, that raise in salary is going to backfill that addenda. So we're not going to give them the raise because they're, they're, they got the addenda there also. So basically, it's just going to fill out the addenda and save us money on having to pay that debt, which we would pay as part of their salary. So if that makes sense.
Michael?
It's 45,000.
I know that you've been working on this, but I don't have a clue of what you're talking about.
Yeah, I know, and I know.
So, so I think that what you.
But I'm just saying, it's, it's within the, the dollar.
Right, I just wanted to finish though. I think that maybe if we could see this, we could see it, it would make sense.
Can't we throw it up and look at it?
Yeah, because.
They're trying to do it up on the board here.
Oh, that's right. We need money for technology. Oh, I didn't mean that.
Is that the, is this the plan that would potentially address the scatter?
Yeah, it would, it would address the scatter problems for certified. Now.
Certified, what is it, what, are we going, are there problems for classified that we need to address?
No, the classified, it's a different animal, but actually the building leaders have a similar issue that they need. But we're only talking how many hundred building leaders, APs and principals. So it's, it's a much smaller, here we're talking about 1,900 teachers.
So there, and there's no inequities in the cert, in the classified?
Uh, I was told that everything's handled differently because it's on a per-hour thing, so.
Their inequities would be to market, I think.
Their, their wishes, what they brought forth was to have just the 2% increase, right, Dennis?
That is correct.
Okay. And so that, that wasn't on their list of recommendations where the.
Something about starting salary on here.
The.
Right, is there, I thought there was something else.
Building team wanted the inequities in their salaries fixed as well.
Okay, so, the list you gave us verbally tonight, Jim, trumps the, the list that we got before that has all the ones and twos and threes on it?
Yeah, President Gregoire, Ms. O'Brien, yes, the, it's extracted from there, but yes, it, that is the priority list. We're whittling down the, the list of budget fixes that we sent previously and creating a new revised list of, of, of what would be included in the recommendation.
And so President Gregoire and I guess Jim, are we going to have an opportunity to look at?
Yes, you will.
The plan that you were talking about and discuss it as well as go over it?
Because we can't discuss it like offline, I mean.
Yeah, it's something that we just finished today and honestly.
I understand, but I guess what I'm asking is, so will we be scheduling another study session to, to have this discussion?
Well, we do have the budget on our next study session as well, so.
So will we have that on there along with, will the N S T have meant to go over the plan too?
Actually, can you send it to us like now, so we have time to digest it?
Online, you can go to fanstar.com/teachersalaries.php.
I, I kind of want it sent through the district, but.
Anybody can look at it, but I, I filtered it for certain eyes because on the one that we have, it has every teacher that it's not for public view, but the, anyway.
Yeah, we can get that posted, we'll, we'll post that in Vibe with a link to the one that's filtered so that the board can see what that is. It is an interactive tool, so you can kind of play with some different numbers. And again, just wanted to acknowledge President Gregoire for taking time to create the tool.
And then one more question, Michael, or Jim, when is the next N S T meeting?
President Gregoire, Ms. Ordway, that's a great question.
I love having great questions.
So I, I know we're going to have to meet sometime between now and the 26th. We did not schedule that, we were.
So, because we have that study session on the 21st, so I wanted to make sure we're understanding and discussing something that you already have.
It would have to be in advance of that because the board packet gets prepared by the 21st for the, the meeting on the 26th. So the N S T would have to meet before the 21st.
So that would be really great for us. Thank you.
Okay, so before we finish here, again, I'll go back to Mike. Who wants, oh, go ahead, Terry. I like the way you think.
That's 2.5?
Thank you, Terry.
And.
President Gregoire, will we also be able to see the, I guess, the rubric or some of the other, maybe have this list that, that Jim gave us orally in writing with some numbers attached to it?
Most definitely.
Okay.
Okay, and just summarizing, because I know you guys are going to meet again, but I'm just telling you where I'm coming from. Assistant principals, 500 5K. I don't have an issue with, I think the inequity in their salaries needs to be addressed because it'd be silly for us to do certified if not doing building leaders as well.
Now, just to ask, why do we have, why do we have inequity? I'm just asking a question. We have, you see, you, you said it a bunch of times, we have inequity. We know why these inequities were caused.
They routed forward, so.
They got addenda? Or hard to fill? Okay, that's it, that's it.
And with the salary increase for classified, I, I think we need to stay competitive there. I don't have an issue with that at all. Okay, we already talked about the hard-to-fill addenda. I don't think Jim's right because I quoted here that we're going to be realizing a lot of savings on addenda, so that 1.5 million ain't going to be 1.5 million. So, and of course, I want to, I, I feel strongly, and again, just because I'm in here, that the hard-to-fill, especially special ed and where we're, we're always short, that we need to have that as, every one of them have a $3,000 bump or whatever you guys came up with. I think that, that's an amazing thing and it'll solve that problem that we've had for years and years trying to fill that position. And maybe some of our regular certified who are qualified in special ed will go back into special ed. And that'll solve us having to, you know, look under rocks for special ed teachers, so.
Michael, could I add, it'd be awesome to have math and science teachers too instead of subs?
Of course, of course, but I'm just saying, I'm just telling you my personal reflections and one board member, take it as you will, but those, I think you guys do a great job and a lot of these things are, I think, are very well, very well needed. Again, I already talked about where I fall in on the capital needs. And take that, again, back to your committee. And if any of the board members have any things there, they're concerned about, thousand times to speak, and same with you.
If we could get maybe a better ballpark figure of what the math and science, I, I know you can't get an exact, but a better ballpark.
Okay, Linda, would you? Oh, sure, sure. Jim, can you lower the, oh. Yeah, by all means, and that's a very good point. We should, after your, your, you address, I'll invite the rest of the public to speak up. What's that? Okay.
Government Board members, my name is Linda Slavic. I appreciate your willingness to let the public comment on the spending of Prop 123. I would like to see the money go towards fixing the inequities for both certified and classified staff. I was in disbelief to see the scatter plot for teachers. Many new teachers hired in our district have been granted $800 for each year of experience. Teachers who have shown loyalty and continued to working in our district have not received this pay. As a matter of fact, teachers were the only employees to lose pay two years in a row. Recently, I had a conversation with our deputy superintendent. He stated that teachers were compensated for their previous pay cuts. This would mean that teachers have only received less than a 1% raise in the past six years. I would like to see the salary schedule brought back. This would be a fair process that would help Deer Valley be competitive. In order to retain employees, we must pay fair market value. Since this hasn't been happening, we have been losing approximately 300 teachers a year. And I fear this trend will continue because I am aware of several teachers who cannot afford to sign their contracts that they were just offered. If Prop 123 passes, Deer Valley would have the opportunity to give their employees a significant raise. It has been years since Deer Valley has discussed spending money and not asking what needs to be cut. I am requesting that the boards support all underpaid employees. Please make students and employees a priority. Enough with the special programs and administrative positions, thank you. And I know you mentioned some of that earlier.
Okay, thank you, Linda. Anybody else want, now's the time, line up at the podium and state your name and. What's that? This is a study session.
I'm up here not only as a concerned teacher, but also as an extremely concerned parent in this district. I am extremely concerned about the number of teachers that have left this district and are continuing to leave this district due to the lack of financial compensation and support. So far this year, my middle school daughter has had to deal with the changing of about 11 substitutes and two certified teachers in her honors ELA class. And the year is not over. I happen to know, as a teacher, how detrimental and challenging this could be on a student, on students and their success in future courses. The majority of substitutes do not have any teaching certificate, certificate, sorry, certification and are, in most cases, completely unfamiliar with the grade level curriculum and standards they are expected to teach. What is happening to my daughter is not an isolated occurrence and is happening throughout the district at many of our schools. A parent at another school in our district informed her child's principal that the staffing issue was not her problem, and that is completely inaccurate. It is everyone's problem when we do not have the very best teachers in our classrooms teaching our children. The most important group in any district is its students. And the second most vital group are those employees that teach those students every day. I went to dinner the other night and my waitress was a high school teacher in this district having to work two jobs to support her family. I happen to know several teachers in this district having to work second jobs, teaching night courses, waitressing, and working retail part-time to make ends meet. If the district wants to retain the best teachers that have made Deer Valley an A district it is, then they need to stop, step up and make teachers and all employees a priority. I get tired of people telling me that teachers don't do it for the money. Of course, we do it for the money. We all have families to support like everyone else. We want to be able to provide for our families and pay our bills. We simp, we are simply asking the board to pay its employees a fair, equitable, and competitive salary before salary increases are made across the board. If the district does not have the funds the first year, then all the teachers that are below the fair and equitable salary level can be given percentages of the difference until all employees are brought up. This plan can be used for all employee groups that, to compensate all employees that have not been compensated for all these years. If the district chooses to keep pushing inequities aside and not deal with the issue, they will be unable to fill their teaching positions. Where will that leave our children then? We can continue to teach without many of those district office personnel that the district feels is so vital. But unless they plan on coming and teaching our classes next year, employee salaries need to be a priority. When you put all the money into district trainers and professional development, many times you are throwing money away. Because until you pay our employees a competitive salary, they are using their training to market themselves and leaving our district to use their training elsewhere. Thank you.
Kristy, Kristy. Have you, can you say your name for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Kristy Cooper.
Have you seen this plan that, that Mike and them have been working on?
I have not seen his plan, but I've made a plan of my own and I've shared it.
I've seen yours.
No, I have not seen anyone else's plan other than my own. And I, I would like to see the plan where teachers are not just.
Well, I've seen, I've seen yours, I have not seen this one, and I, I wish you had, because I would like some feedback because I haven't seen it, whether or not you felt that it would.
Well, teachers would love to be involved and have input on everything because it seems like very few, the transparency is not there, it's only given information to very few. And I think that everybody should be involved in the process, not just a handpicked few. That's my opinion.
Okay, thanks, Kristy.
Some of my concerns have already been addressed, but I appreciate.
Speak your name first.
Frances Bierman.
Okay.
I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you. Today, I represent myself, a special education teacher in Deer Valley for eight years, and my colleague Kay Nordean, who couldn't be here this evening, who has 20 years in the district, all in special ed. Statistically, we've both surpassed the life expectancy of the average teacher of a student with special needs. Yet, due to when we were hired, neither of us have ever received a hard-to-fill addenda, unlike other teachers that have been more recently hired. So I'm an eight-year teacher, she's a 20-year teacher, we've kind of had that gap. Personally, this was the first year that I made more than I did the year I was hired into Deer Valley. Thank you for including a raise in the budget for next year. I do appreciate that. When looking at budgeting for Prop 123 money, I would like for you to consider the hard-to-fill addenda for all employees that have shown loyalty by staying in Deer Valley and in special ed and not punish them financially for being hired in the years that the district did not maybe deem special ed a high priority area to fill. So, thank you for your time and letting me speak. Thank you.
Hi, Jenny Frank. I hadn't planned to speak tonight, but somehow that never seems to stop me, so. I just wanted to give you the perspective of one of the 288 teachers who left. teachers who left your district last year. I was one of those teachers, an experienced teacher, I got my tenure pin on my way out the door, and I just wanted to let you know why it was I left. It wasn't the workload. I've always worked hard at jobs I love, and I love teaching. It wasn't the students. I love my students, they were great kids. Even the tough kids were great kids. It, it wasn't my administrator. I always got along well with my administrators, I had fabulous colleagues. I had what I thought was the best job in the world. I left because I couldn't pay my bills. That's that simple. I couldn't support myself and my two sons who are at home as a single parent with the paycheck that was coming home and got smaller and smaller over the years. So, if you have the opportunity with money coming back into the districts, hopefully with Prop 123, even though it no longer affects my paycheck, I would highly encourage you to, to use a large portion of that money, a significant amount, to reimburse teachers or pay them back, those that stayed in the classrooms. And I wish I could have, but I couldn't sacrifice my family's well-being with a son going into college. I just couldn't do that anymore. And also, as Kristy pointed out, I took advantage of all of the professional development that this just district offered, and they offered really high-quality professional development for either free or very, very low fee, and all of that training has gone with me to my new position. So, that is a, a financial loss in that respect to the district. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any comments from the committee? Any other questions, comments, board members, any?
I have one.
Relay your opinions, please, everyone.
Steve and Dennis, I just would like to make sure that the, there aren't, we've already addressed for classified, or what, any inequities in, in hourly wages, or?
Does that two percent that you discussed, does it come?
Does the two percent?
Okay.
Oh, forget it. No, again, it's, no, I.
Okay.
But do you have inequities that we maybe need to know about? Are there things that you're seeing out there that maybe we don't know about?
I don't know that I could actually give you all the examples that might exist because the salary levels in the classified area are.
They've gone a little great.
Certified and the certified. There are the same kinds of problems throughout classified with people trying to make the limits be. I think what we've heard from this board is a fairness that, that you want to see toward everybody kind of coming up together and not a straight percentage to where the top keeps moving farther and the bottom doesn't really move. I know that I appreciate hearing that at the board meeting before last, when two of you spoke specifically to that, but all five of you spoke to acknowledging that the work we do was a collective effort, and you agreed to accept our MNO presentation. And I also listened to, as I, as I listened to how you all said that to give me direction personally for what we can try to do as a classified group for this district. And I, I guess I say that with the understanding that I, you hear things all the time that make you think maybe what you heard wasn't what they meant, but I tend to think now again tonight, what I'm hearing is that you want to see an equitable situation for everyone, that it, it takes everybody to make this district work, and, and I don't, there's really nothing else I can say, it takes everybody to make it work, from yourselves to the two-hour person that's not here to make it work.
Okay, thank you.
That's what you heard from me.
Very well spoken, and I agree with the statement. And, again, I also throw in a, in a hurry factor there, but no pressure, but, again, you understand the, the, the dynamic and the culture and how everybody's, they need to hear some good news, and the sooner the better, that's where I come from. So, Mr. Bear, Ms. Fisher, Ms. O'Brien, anybody else? With that, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.